And now call to order the November twelfth, twenty twenty five Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to very proud little Christian one nation under God, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand? Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teetz? Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. All right, now will be time for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes to speak on non-agenda items. Um, state your name to the podium for the record.
My name is Patrick Redmond. I'm a volunteer with the Greg Lopez for Governor Campaign, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. All right, we'll cut the comment. All right, next up, we have a presentation, and I'd like Mr. Cody Byrd to provide an introduction on this item.
Evening, Mayor and Board. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, this will be really brief. Um, I'm really excited to be introducing a new staff member to our team. Um, as you know, um, we've been talking about this position for a little bit. This was a position we filled a vacancy with a new sort of roles and responsibilities. But it is my great pleasure to introduce to you tonight Elizabeth McGargle. And Liz is going to, goes by Liz, um, is going to be filling our role for Business Development Manager for the town of Wellington. So we want to take a few minutes to introduce Liz so you can, uh, see her smiling face and hear a little bit about her background and, yeah, welcome her to the team. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody, and thank you for having me here tonight and for welcoming, welcoming me into this wonderful community. I am very excited to, to get to know everyone and to hit the ground. Um, I have a background in other government experiences, including the United States Patent and Trademark Office and the United States Department of State. Yeah, in those capacities, I have worked on programs, um, to support large-scale operational improvements, um, understanding the needs and service requirements for small businesses and individual inventors to both get and maintain their intellectual property rights. I've also worked on a variety of strategic planning initiatives, both from kind of long-term embassy level, as well as individual kind of roadmaps to get, uh, shorter-term initiatives going. I moved to Colorado about two years ago with my family. Uh, my husband was launching a, a startup small business. So I understand and continue to understand on a daily basis what, what businesses and business owners are going through from a financial, personal level. Um, very committed to being a partner from day one. So look forward to meeting all of you and continuing to, to help the, uh, wonderful town of Wellington grow.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for the items in the consent agenda?
October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting minutes, resolution number forty-five dash twenty twenty five, authorizing the temporary closure of portions of State Highway One, Cleveland Avenue with the town, within the town of Wellington during the annual Parade of Lights event on December sixth, twenty twenty five. Resolution number forty-six dash twenty twenty five confirming and establishing fees to be charged by the Town of Wellington Municipal Court.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. Will you please read the title or on to action items? Will you please read the title for item E one?
Resolution number forty-four dash twenty twenty five, adopting the Town of Wellington Financial Management Policies effective January one, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. And then Mr. Nick Roravid, our Finance, uh, Director and Town Treasurer will present on this item.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Excuse me. I'm Nick Roravid, Finance Director and Town Treasurer. I won't take up too much of your time tonight in bringing back the Town of Wellington Financial Management Policies effective January first, twenty twenty six. I'm excited to share the culmination of several months and countless hours of work across multiple departments in development of these policies. And I want to say a special thank you to Deputy Town Administrator Kelly Hodeline for her collaboration, support, and significant investment of time in helping get these, this project across the finish line. As you're aware, these policies were presented to the Finance Advisory Board at their July twenty-eighth meeting and shared with the Board of Trustees at your September thirtieth work session. At that time, direction from this board resulted in the following updates to the policies. The general fund debt limit on page twelve of the policy is defined as the annual debt service lower than eight to ten percent of general expenditure. Capital improvement projects on page twenty-four defined as costing twenty-five thousand dollars or more with an expected life greater than three years. Added a definition of successor and identified successors for mayor and town administrator on page thirty-nine. For the mayor, the successor is the mayor pro tem, then the longest-serving trustee. And for the town administrator, successors in order are deputy town administrator, finance director, public works director, then the longest-serving director. And a clarification that Appendix A Signature, Signature Authority, P-card per transaction and P-card monthly spending limit may be updated by consent agenda at a Board of Trustees meeting. The Town of Wellington Financial Management Policies have been developed as a comprehensive resource that aligns the town's financial practices with the Board of Trustees Guiding Principle for Fiscal Responsibility, the Strategic Plan's Direction to Ensure Strong Town Operations and Government Finance Officer Association Best Practices. It will supersede all previous fiscal management policies upon its effective date, January first. Thank you for your support and guidance with this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board on this item? Going once, going twice. So, any comments from the public on this item? No. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution number forty-four dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, adopting Town of Wellington Financial Management Policies effective January the first, twenty twenty six.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any final comments from the board? No. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you very much. Oh, here up again. Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E two?
Ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty five, amending Article four of Chapter four of the Wellington Municipal Code regarding the vendor fee, vendor's fee for the collection of sales tax.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roravid will also present on this item.
Good evening again. Uh, my second item tonight for consideration is an ordinance to amend the Wellington Municipal Code, repealing section four, four, one-ten, effective January first, twenty twenty six. This section allows retailers to withhold a vendor's fee from the town's sales tax they collect. The reason we are bringing this for your consideration is twofold. I'll begin though with the code, what the code states and what the vendor fee is. Wellington Municipal Code, section four, four, one-ten, says an eligible vendor retailer can withhold three and one-third percent of the sales tax collected for the town each month. To be considered eligible, a retailer must not be delinquent in sales tax remittance. Currently, collection, administration, and enforcement of the town's sales tax is performed by Colorado Department of Revenue. So this section of the town code allows retailers to retain three and one-third percent of the town's three percent sales tax remitted to the Department of Revenue. As a reminder, the town's sales tax is collected on all goods sold in town that leave with the customer or that are delivered to an address within town limits. As I shared, this is being brought to the board tonight for two reasons. First, the application of a vendor fee across the region and state is not uniform. Most of Colorado's home-ruled cities do not allow vendor fee withholding, including Fort Collins. Recently, the Colorado General Assembly passed House Bill twenty-five B dash one thousand five, eliminating the vendor fee on state sales tax, stating it simplifies the collection of sales tax, eases administrative burden, and relieves retailer confusion. Following suit, Laramie County Commissioners also eliminated the county's vendor fee in October. Eliminating Wellington's vendor fee effective January first will bring the town in alignment with the, with the two other taxing authorities in the area. Second, due to the state's collection of the town's sales tax, we're limited to the reporting they can provide the town regarding sales tax collected and vendor fee withholdings. As such, we cannot conclusively state which eligible businesses retain the fee. However, in conversations with local government manager Brandon Davis of the Colorado Department of Revenue Taxation Division, we can estimate the potential impact and the increase in revenue the town may receive, a current goal of the board-approved twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine strategic plan. Using sales tax revenue from twenty twenty-four of our local breweries, convenience stores, downtown shops, grocery stores and deliveries, and the well-known retailer with two-day shipping, among other, uh, many other businesses, we have estimated the impact of eliminating the vendor fee to range from ten to, excuse me, from twenty to sixty dollars annually for small businesses, up to ten to eighteen thousand dollars for large national and international corporations doing business in or having goods delivered to Wellington. The cumulative impact of additional potential revenue to the town is estimated to be between fifty-five thousand and a hundred and ten thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty six, which is split sixty-seven and two-thirds percent to the general fund, eighteen and one-third percent to the street fund, and fifteen percent to the park fund. Staff believes the alignment with state and county sales tax practices, as well as the potential for much-needed additional revenue, is worthy of board consideration. It should be noted, this is not an increase on sales tax paid by residents and is not a tax policy change under Tabor, nor does it create new responsibilities for retailers. For this to take effect on January first, twenty twenty six, it must be approved by board action and the Department of Revenue notified by November fifteenth, twenty twenty five. It can, however, be addressed at an, a later date as the Department of Revenue is able to update systems twice annually. Thank you for your time tonight, and as no item, excuse me, as no questions were submitted in advance, I'm happy to stand for questions now. Thank you.
Comment from the public, I'm sorry. No. You want here a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty five, amending Article four of Chapter four of the Wellington Municipal Code regarding the vendor's fee, vendor's fee for the collection of sales tax.
Second.
Perfect. Any final comments from the board on this item? No.
Great idea.
Great idea. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E three?
Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty five, establishing an intergovernmental agreement between Laramie County, Colorado and the Town of Wellington, Colorado, regarding cooperation on managing urban development.
Thank you. And then Mr. Cody Byrd, our Planning Director, will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Uh, before you tonight, this, this item is, uh, hopefully ready for board's final consideration. We have talked about this topic a couple of times in the past, so I'm going to give you a high-level update, um, on where this item came from. Um, this is an intergovernmental agreement, uh, between Laramie County and the Town of Wellington for managing urban growth around the Town of Wellington as it grows. Um, this was discussed in a work session with, uh, the Board of County Commissioners in February of this year, and we had had several conversations prior to that as well. Um, but the topic generally is as the town grows, um, and areas, um, around the town are contemplated for urban-level development, there's a need to coordinate with our county partners for service deliverability, infrastructure deployment, unified standards, and how we cooperate together for development review proposals. There's also elements of protecting open space between communities to protect our urban boundaries and create that separation or buffer space. Um, and this agreement contemplates those ideas as well. Um, so before you tonight is the culmination of, of work that's happened between county staff and towns' planning staff, um, as well as public engagement. So a couple of key highlights, um, included in the agreement in your packet is a, a boundary map. Um, it shows a, a dark black line and a dark red line. The red line is identified as the growth management area or urban growth boundary for this document. That's what the county is agreeing to put an overlay zone district, uh, in their code, um, to supplement the underlying county zone regulations for those areas that are outside the town's jurisdiction. The black line on the map is the town's recognized growth management area, which is aligned with our service area deliverability. It's where we expect we would be able to provide urban-level services over a period of twenty to forty years. Um, these boundaries can change, but you have to start somewhere. Um, right now, these are good boundaries for the two different subsets. Um, and town staff worked closely with the county planning staff to identify this, uh, red boundary line, which is the Exhibit A in the, in the document. A couple of highlights there, that, that red, uh, boundary specifically does not align with our, the town's identified GMA for a couple of reasons. Um, there's in the county planning documents and has received support by Timneth and Fort Collins. There's a cooperative planning area south of County Road fifty-eight. This is an area that Wellington has identified that we can serve this area well with our infrastructure through infrastructure extensions. We have planned our, our treatment plans for that future growth. But because it's in that area that's identified for cooperative planning, there is a need to coordinate with the other jurisdictions for how that area may develop in the future. So that has kind of a future element to it, and it's not part of this agreement. It'll be a separate effort. Some other areas where those, where the red boundary line for the county's growth management area and the town's identified growth management area don't align include areas to the far west and far north and northwest of town. We, in our future lands use map for our comprehensive plan, identify some agricultural areas. Um, these are prime agricultural irrigated areas. Um, they are areas where the town is likely to serve a different level of development someday in the future, but for now, we've identified those as protecting that agricultural, uh, resource, and so there would be no need for urban services in this timeline. We can always amend those in the future as things might change. So that's the growth management area, boundary map and Exhibit A. The town planning staff supported county planning staff here at the Leaper Center in August to do a public open house where all of the county residents received, uh, mail notices to, to come and learn more about this topic. It was very well attended. There were fifty-plus individuals there, um, and we had a pretty open dialogue that, um, some opinions were shared, but overall, the feeling after that meeting was amicable towards understanding what these, uh, rules and regulations do and don't do. Uh, I won't speak for every member that was there, but as a whole, the, there was a kind of a feeling of understanding of what was going on. Um, subsequently, the, the County Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the growth management area overlay zone district, which is contemplated in this agreement. Um, and they did recommend unanimously to forward that recommendation on to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners is scheduled to hear that on Monday, at which staff will, your town staff will attend and, and represent the community there at that hearing if we need to. Um, and the Board of County Commissioners, upon, uh, we suspect that they will approve that growth management area overlay zone district. Um, and then they would consider the IGA at their Administrative Board Matters Meeting, uh, probably in December, and staff can support that there as well. Um, so we do feel like the, the intergovernmental agreement that's in your packet has been fully vetted, fully informed, and is ready for your consideration. In the agenda packet, we did identify that there's a two-party agreement. There are sometimes revisions that take place, um, for clarity and effect. And so we did ask for a little bit of consideration for that. And this morning, I got a response from the county planner that they had a couple of minor revisions. And I, I do have a copy of this I'll share with you, but they're also very quick. They're very non-substantive, but I wanted to highlight that. This is our recommendation for approval tonight. Um, so very briefly, um, in your packet, in the IGA for paragraph number one for growth management area established, there's a clarification in the first line. It referred to the growth management area as being within the boundary identified in Exhibit A. That should state the growth management area overlay zone district is within the growth management area. Technical clarification, none of us caught it because GMA says GMA in three different places, but we've cleared it up now. Um, there was elimination of one word that wasn't necessary in that same paragraph. Um, paragraph three for final authority, the town staff had recommended some language that said that we would, that the county commissioners in considering a development proposal would give substantial weight to consideration of items, and they responded that, how is that defined? How do we identify if it has been substantially weighted or not? Um, and their recommendation was to simply leave it at shall be considered. That seems reasonable to our staff. We understand their concern there. Um, skipping ahead to page five of the IGA, a couple of words were added, um, where referrals for a development review follow state law. The county requested that we add established county procedure, which is a non-technical issue and easy for us to accommodate, so we're supportive of, of all of these, in fact. Um, paragraph eight D removes some extraneous language, um, regarding referencing another section that's already encompassed in here, so it wasn't necessary. And so it's just a deletion. And then lastly, in the, um, paragraph eleven for Box Elder Stormwater Authority Coordination, uh, refer, adding simply a references in accordance with the agreement concerning Box Elder Basin Stormwater Authority approved December nineteen, twenty seventeen. There's an existing agreement out there that states a lot of similar language. This IGA is not intended to supersede, replace, or modify the other agreement that's already in place, so it's just referencing it, uh, incorporating it by reference. Um, so I'll pass this around. Um, I have two copies on, for starting either end, just so you can see that language. And I provided a copy of that to the town attorney and town administrator also. Um, staff's in support of those minor changes as described and in your, uh, being circulated currently. So our staff recommendation is this is ready to go in the format presented tonight. Um, and we recommend adoption of Resolution forty-seven dash twenty twenty five approving the IGA for, uh, urban development.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item?
I got one for you.
Go for it.
Uh, on the cooperative planning area, uh, the other municipalities that are in question, they can't do a land grab. I mean, it has to be a coordinated effort between all two or three or whoever.
Good question, and they might ask the same of us.
Right.
Um, but the, the cooperative planning area does not prevent a municipality from, and using their annexation authority um, to annex property within the cooperative planning area. It could certainly jeopardize the other mutually agreed-upon goals of the intergovernmental agreement for any of those entities. Um, so there's, would certainly be some risk there, but it, this document does not prevent a municipality from exercising their annexation authority under state law.
We could do the same.
We, we could, knowing that there could be some potential risks or considerations that we want to weigh before doing something of that nature, but it does not prevent us from doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? No, we're good. Good. Okay, any comments from the public on this item? No. All right, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty twenty five, establishing an intergovernmental agreement between Laramie County, Colorado and the Town of Wellington, Colorado regarding cooperation on managing urban development.
I'll second.
Any final comments? No. Oh, go for it.
Um, just, uh, just for the record and, uh, for any residents that might be listening, I just want to say that, uh, of all the, uh, all the, uh, things that the board has done over the last four years, this is probably one of the most important things that we've done in terms of a road to, uh, sustain some open space between Fort Collins and Wellington. Um, I think we're all kind of aware that we, we don't necessarily want Fort Collins to be, uh, uh, kind of stepping on our, uh, territory up here and that we do, we do want to have some separation between the communities. So, uh, this is the first step to getting that done, and I'm very excited about it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And Timneth.
What?
And Timneth.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and Timneth. Uh, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E four?
Public hearing and second reading on ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty five, considering adoption by reference of the twenty twenty-four International Building Codes with local amendments and adoption of the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code and adoption of the twenty twenty-five Colo- Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code, version one point zero.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing, and I'll ask staff to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Cody Byrd, Planning Director. Um, I've given this spiel a couple of times before, but I'm going to remind you, um, on our public hearing procedures, there's a few things that we follow, um, just for housekeeping and so that the public understands our processes. Um, this particular topic is presented in two different agenda items. The first agenda item is the public hearing portion of that, um, in which staff will present, uh, a very brief presentation on this. We'll open it up for public comments. Staff can close with any closing comments, and then the board can close the public hearing. The second agenda item is the actual, uh, ordinance consideration, which would be the official action of the board, uh, where you can deliberate and take an action on, uh, the request in front of you tonight. Um, in this particular instance, for code adoption, this is a legislative hearing. Um, these codes apply across a broad class of categories for the town as a whole, not any specific, uh, individual property. So this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding. It is legislative. Um, and as such, the town being the applicant in this case, we've brought this forward. Uh, the town has initiated it in coordination with, with a regional collaboration. Um, so we are the applicant, so there won't be an applicant presentation other than what I share with you tonight. Any questions on, oh, and as, because it's not quasi-judicial, there's really no, there's no need to disclose conflicts of interest or ex parte communications. Legislative matters can be discussed outside of a hearing. Any questions regarding procedure for tonight's public hearing? Very good. Um, so I want to be really brief with the presentation. I know this is, this is a topic, uh, for twenty twenty-four International Building Code Adoption. Um, staff and, and Kelly Dykstra, building officials with me this evening as well. We've been in front of this board two times, three times with this subject matter. Um, it has been coordinated regionally across northern Colorado communities to create alignment and consistency of the code adoption. Um, we are currently on the twenty eighteen international codes. We are recommending moving to the twenty twenty-four international codes consistent with our other regional partners. Um, we obviously, um, work with Safe Built, um, as our plan review and inspection agency, and they've been in coordination with this as well and represent other Colorado communities to create this alignment, um, on these topics as well. Um, importantly, in this, in this, um, code adoption suite, um, there is a state compliance requirement regarding the plumbing code for gray water systems, and we have satisfied that, uh, uh, component in this code adoption suite in the twenty twenty-four, uh, International Plumbing Code. We are also including in this suite coordination with our, uh, Wellington Fire Protection District. They submitted recommendations regarding the International Fire Code, uh, twenty twenty-four edition, which we also adopt. Those recommendations came directly from our fire district saying this is what they supported. This is what they were recommending, that they're going to have a public hearing on and adoption, uh, consideration next Wednesday. Um, and as such, we also have the twenty twenty-five Colorado Model Solar Ready and Electric Ready Code included in this suite. That's a state requirement that we adopt that, um, as well as the twenty twenty-five, um, Wildfire Resiliency Code. That's another state requirement. We're able to, uh, we're presenting all of those for compliance in this one adoption suite. This is the second reading on this ordinance. The, the first reading was, uh, conducted in October and presentations given prior to that. Um, so this has been duly advertised in the, uh, newspaper of general circulation two times, uh, in accordance with the first reading, second reading schedule. Um, and so it is ripe for your consideration tonight. Um, so staff is recommending, um, adoption of the twenty twenty-four International Building Codes and including the, um, Colorado Model Solar Ready and Electric Ready Code and the twenty twenty-five Wildfire Resiliency Code. I'm happy to stand for any general questions and reminder you do still have a public hearing, uh, for this item as well.
Thank you, sir. Um, any questions from the board before public? Okay. Um, I'll now open the public hearing for public comment. Members of the public will be given three minutes to speak. State your name at podium for the record.
Yeah, Jamie Bessler. Um, I'm with Bessler Homes. Uh, and just for clarity, right out of the gate, I'm here to- And just for clarity, right out of the gate, I'm here to, I support the adoption of all the codes in this full suite. The specific code that I'm going to bring to question is the twenty twenty four international residential code. And that's the one that I'm going to request. We'll give a suggestion here at the end. So first off, the Bessler Homes, we're a family owned local home builder, been here ninety six since nineteen sixty eight. We're also employee owned, about fifty employee owners within our company. We're very vested in our communities here in Northern Colorado. Nearly four thousand homes built in Northern Colorado over those years. Our focus is on building and creating homeownership opportunities. We focused on the most affordable end of the housing market. And really, that most affordable end is the greatest, the greatest housing issue that we have. Creating affordable, that gross lack of affordability is our greatest problem in housing. And so we want to in every way improve the efficiency, the safety, the features, the quality of a home. We desire to do that every day. Those are, there's a lot of things in there, though, that are wants. They are not the core need. The core need is a home that our buyers within our community, our citizens within our community can afford and get into homeownership. And so as trustees, you're, you have a tremendous influence opportunity to prioritize need over the wants. And the need is for affordable housing. A statistic here in Lamer County, every one thousand dollars of additional housing cost eliminates one hundred and four families from homeownership opportunity. It removes them from the affordability window. And so with what you're considering here, the adoption of there's, there's two things within this. There's the I R C code, but there's also the Colorado Model Electric and Solar Ready. And I understand you're required to do that, but I want you to know that that requirement, there's six items in there that add forty five hundred dollars to the cost of a home next year and every year thereafter. So that already removes a tremendous amount of families. Additionally, within the I R C code is this requirement for fire sprinklers. That that adds another five thousand dollars on top of that. And so the total cost added to a home next year, if that fire sprinklers are allowed and not amended out of the I R C code is ninety five hundred dollars. Again, thousand dollars of cost, hundred and four families, ninety five hundred is nearly a thousand families that will be removed from that affordability window. The solution, don't require fire sprinklers in homes. They're wants, not needs. If you could, if there's a requirement to be put out, require builders to provide an option for fire sprinklers in a home. Let someone choose what they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hank McDougall with Bessler Homes as well. I'm just here to talk about the the construction of the homes that we build, the town home product specifically, that we've built in multiple jurisdictions, municipalities currently without the use of fire sprinklers. We currently build to the I R C code as it stands with a two hour firewall rated material running through the middle. So that is a two by six stud going into a quarter inch, a two inch firewall, another quarter inch, and so on, all the way through. With this, it does offer from foundation all the way to the the roof line as it stands, the town homes themselves, they all are engineered independent of each other. So if a fire did break out in this, there is no engineering catastrophe that could happen between each town home. Another thing that because of that separation that we build to with this two hour firewall, there is fourteen inches of separation between unit to unit. With that fourteen inches, there is a lot of, well, not a lot of sound transmission. If you do require fire sprinklers in these properties, there is a reduction in the firewall rating between the properties. And this can actually drop down to six point five inches between wall to wall. The sound transmission from that is a lot. We don't want to end up with people complaining that they can hear their neighbors, people enjoying a night out in their in their own home yelling, screaming, watching a game, they'll be able to hear the person next door. So that is a quality factor for us that we would like to maintain that two hour firewall separation and still build to that. There is another piece to that is the maintenance piece of a fire sprinkler in a home. These things need to be flushed out yearly. There is also ongoing maintenance past that and potential failure just of the heads themselves to cause a flood. Currently, we struggle to get homeowners just to change out their furnace filters. So to add someone another step of flushing out their fire sprinkler system on a yearly basis is something that I don't see people doing. Just adding that that extra cost to them as well that they may not enjoy. The the code specifically, as Jamie mentioned, is just in the I R C and that is the three oh nine. The National Association of Home Builders did release like the recommended amendments from the the twenty twenty four I codes. They did mention our three oh nine to be amended out in its entirety. As Jamie mentioned, that's not something we 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 can do or like to do. It's it's offering that option. So if someone does see the value in fire sprinklers, they can have them installed. But as you mentioned, people being priced out of homes is just such a stark thing in Colorado.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm A J. I'm actually on the sales team at Bessler. First of all, thank you guys for the time for us to talk tonight. First of all, I wanted to start with kind of our our goal out of this in which is to add an I R C workshop session agenda to kind of give more, to kind of give more information and answer to this question. But we do apologize, obviously, for not bringing this to your attention earlier. However, I am here just to kind of speak to the portion of dealing with these people every day who can't qualify for a home. There is, it's sadly a thing that I deal with on a weekly basis of people who are just on the cusp of that homeownership. And then we work with them through building credit or building that savings or anything that they can do to afford and get into that homeownership. And then specifically, our town home product is really that first first home, that starting home for a lot of people, specifically just for that price point and things like that. So this is a sensitive topic to that specifically. And then truly, when we think about what what homeownership means to people, whether it's setting themselves up financially for their future or what home means for people as in the memories they build and things like that. Any any dollar does count towards getting them into those homes. So I just ask that we don't eliminate five hundred more families from homeownership. And we do take into consideration, every dollar does count.
Thank you. No further public comment. Mr. Bird, can you clarify something for me? This is specifically related to town homes, correct? Not just residential homes? Residential town homes?
The, so appreciate the question, Mayor. My impression, from what I'm hearing from the public comments tonight, they're referring to the the town homes component. There is a, and this is an already established portion of our code that requires sprinklers and anything with three or more, which includes town homes. Presently, the single family detached and duplex products are not required to have automatic sprinklers. I don't want to speak for those that were speaking, but my impression was it was related to the the town homes and not the other products, but I could be mistaken.
The confusion with product types is the difference and the distinction between multifamily and single family attached. Our town homes are single family attached. They sit on their own lot that is paired with another lot. It's really no difference than a duplex. It's just four or five units together, single family attached. Multifamily being under I B C code, different code, which is more apartment building.
Okay.
Different.
Yeah, thank you.
Jamie, before you go away. I'm Lowry. We've actually been on build sites together.
Yes.
So can you tell me the the town homes that you built in Greeley in the Hope Springs Development? Those did not have sprinklers, correct?
Greeley does require.
They do. Okay, okay.
Several several other jurisdictions we build in do not require.
Sure. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing of this portion and go into board deliberation. Trustee Cannon, do you have, do you have anything to say?
Well, I know the importance of building codes and we've gone through this process before back in what, twenty?
Eighteen.
Seventeen or twenty eighteen? We we upgraded the twenty eighteen building code. I think that was in twenty nineteen that we did that. And you have to stay ahead of these things. You just, you don't want them to be lagging too far behind. But understanding and being able to quote the building codes, I can't do that. And I'm not sure there's anybody in this room that can do that either. We've had on our books from what Mr. Bird was talking about, the requirement for sprinklers within town homes of three or more units connected. And and I don't know specifically what the new code is requiring. Is it requiring a greater standard than that? Mr. Bird, okay.
Yes, please.
Thank you, trustee Cannon. To the, if the the question I heard was, is is the requirement for sprinklers and products with three or more attached units a new requirement? No, it is not. That's that's a code that's currently in your twenty eighteen international codes and your international fire code. That was brought to the town by the Wellington Fire Protection District in the past that they supported the requirement to sprinkler any products with three or more based on their ability to to respond. And that has been their recommendation to date for this code adoption.
Even for this one?
Correct. They presented this, the same recommendations that are currently on the books that they wanted to continue those.
Okay, thank you. Answer my question.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
I, well, I guess I would say, considering that we've already had the requirement in place for this since twenty, oh, obviously, since the twenty eighteen code, I I would not be inclined to make the amendment knowing what I know currently, so.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go and then we'll, we'll just go down the line, make it easy. I understand the need for affordability and things of that nature, right? But at the same time, being, I used to be a firefighter, the value of safety is huge for those families when they're in those homes. Greeley in and of itself has very good standards within how they do things because of the fact they didn't use to. And so they used to see a lot of fire because they lacked suppression systems, things of that nature, right? So with it already being in code and us really not proposing any change to that requirement and just my own personal beliefs in in life safety on on the backside of those things, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor in in changing this over. Trustee Daly?
We've had a lot of house fires in Wellington, and I don't know if it's, it seems like way more than we should based off of how many households that we have. And some have been lost in entirety. So that scares me a lot. And I know that I assume that there's some savings in homeowners insurance related to having sprinklers. I don't think it would be as significant as maybe the costs for install, but I I do believe that those building codes are as they are for safety purposes. So I think I want some more clarity in exactly what's being asked because I'm reading this section three oh nine. And it's talking about, I'll just need clarity on that, I think. But otherwise, I am in favor of all the changes in adopting the new codes.
Do you want that clarity right now?
Yeah, I'm still, what exactly is the part that is is being asked to be excluded? If we could have super clear, just from our staff perspective of from your impression of the public comment, what exactly is being asked as an amendment or a mission?
Yeah, so there's actually a, and actually Hank, what's the other code section, three oh two point two?
Three oh two.
Three oh two point two point two, if you read that, makes it clear you actually do not need fire sprinklers in a home if you have a two hour fire separation on an attached residential unit. Three oh nine point nine creates ambiguity because it seems contradictory to three oh two point two. It is for that exact reason why jurisdictions have chosen, they ultimately, they've, they've said, we're going to make a a clear decision here and go ahead and delineate this. So what they have amended out is three oh nine. Yeah, and that would be be our request also.
Thank you. All right, trustee Wigan?
Going to bring you up here again. What what jurisdictions right now do not require the fire or the sprinklers?
Sure. And actually Hank has all of that. I can tell you Johnstown, Fort Lupton, Alt, because those are ones we build in actively now. Why don't you go?
Yeah, Erie. Erie? Erie just voted on this.
You can't understand him.
Erie and Commerce City also just.
They do require that the firewall in between. They got a minimum there. If you don't have that minimum, then you have to have sprinklers, correct?
Correct. And there's a lot of redundancy put in place with hardwired smoke alarms these days. Obviously, all that egress that we're required to have, and we're not trying to change anything like that. The current building standards are obviously very high importance on safety. So there is almost that redundancy, especially with the fire sprinkler system that is required, the P nine two oh four. It is a fire suppression, not a fire extinguisher. So smoke alarms and other things like that would be going off in the home. I don't know if anybody set off their smoke alarms cooking though. Pretty loud, hard to sleep through for a reason.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, my impression would be if they got, you know, the two hour firewall separation there, I think that's that's more important, I think, at this point, in my own opinion. If especially if it keeps the price down a little bit, makes it a little bit more affordable, but that would be my opinion on that. And I think right now, you know, everything's about affordable housing and everybody's getting priced out of the market. And what little bit we can do, we should try. And as long as we know that we're getting and we're holding up a good standard with that two hour, because I bet you ten to one, if you looked at the fire, the fire problems we have had, it's where they don't have the firewalls in between because they do work. I'm sorry.
Were you asking a question?
No, but you can do a clarification.
Yeah, this is board deliberation time.
Okay, but thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Moore?
So I deal with affordability every single day. And it's very important to me and something that I'm really passionate about. I also care about safety. I've helped to build some of those firewalls and they are sturdy and tough and effective. I'm torn because I, of course, want people to be as safe as possible, but I do know the functionality of those walls. I had a question and I'm sitting here trying to Google it, but there was a, somebody made the comment. It might have been you, Jamie, about when the sprinkler systems are installed, it reduces the firewall or can reduce the firewall. And I'm looking at why and I don't, I'm not finding it. So. You can.
I could probably answer that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
It's usually probably because they're going to cut costs where they can for those sprinkler systems because it's no longer needed to have that two hour firewall.
Okay, so it's a design choice.
Yeah, it's just like one, once you have one, you don't need the other.
Sure. So then I would say I like the idea of amending to allow for the choice on this. I like the idea of amending to allow for the choice on this particular issue. And I think that there are provisions in place that already provide that level of safety that's effective. And if we can save our families money and they're the ones making the choice, I would feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, Trustee Daly?
I very much appreciate the public comment that we received today, but we have to also keep in mind that this, this, ordinance came with recommendation from our actual fire professionals. And they recommended the code as shown and as recommended in our, in this item and in this ordinance. So I appreciate the perspective of what may or may not be safe. But in my perspective, I don't personally have the authority or the knowledge to say that one is safer than the other. But what I do have is the word of fire professionals and their recommendation on code. And that is what I will take to heart. And that, that would be the reasoning for my approval to take exactly as is, as recommended for this ordinance. I just, I just don't have that authority. I just don't have that knowledge personally and I wouldn't put it on my, my guess, so. That's, that's my statement there.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Yeah, I also appreciate public comment for the public hearing there. And I agree with Trustee Daly that, you know, taking recommendations from the fire district, those fire, fire professionals, to me carries more weight than, and no offense, a builder who wants to build a certain product and sell product like that. So I am reluctant as well. I think we can address affordability in other legislative ways other than changing the building code to, to get rid of a safety concern, just to keep the price of housing down. So I, I would be going with, with the code as presented.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make one additional comment, please? I appreciate your comments, Trustee Cannon. I do just want to say for the record that this particular builder is someone, is a company that I know firsthand is very concerned with not just cutting costs, but affordability for the actual family, for small families, for young families, for people who don't otherwise have an opportunity at homeownership. And so while we may not choose to vote their way, I would like to recognize Bessler as a very ethical and great builder who's also a champion for affordable housing.
Yeah, thank you for that, Trustee Moore. Okay.
Can we get an input from maybe Cody on this a little bit?
What do you, yeah, what do you need?
More of his insight on it, what his, and I know he, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I know he cannot go against what we're actually doing, but can we even amend it? And what is, what's your opinion?
Mr. Bird, sorry.
That's all right. I'll, I'll respond to almost anything these days. Uh, thank you for the question, Trustee Wigan, and thank you Mayor for, for the opportunity. We are a little bit out of order procedurally for the meeting. I, I'm not certain. It feels like you've closed the public comment portion and maybe you're asking for a, a staff response at this point. Is that a fair assessment of where we're at?
I'd say it's a fair response for a staff assessment.
Okay, so I, I think the minutes could reflect that the public comment portion is closed at this period unless I see any objection.
No objections.
So to the, the question, I appreciate the opportunity to respond. I do strongly agree with what Trustee Moyer said about Jamie and Bessler and the, and the whole company. Every one of these individuals here and everyone else that we've worked with have been outstanding partners in our community to be champions for housing affordability, to be good builders and just good humans. They're absolutely excellent to communicate with and partners in, in finding solutions. So I, I can't say enough good things about this team. Um, we all, staff also acknowledges the desire to look at things maybe differently than it has been in the past in terms of whether a code is existing or not and understanding the reasons why. There are a few technical things I wanted to respond to along that line. I think there was a little bit of confusion that came up in the dialogue tonight regarding the firewalls. And so I want to touch on that piece specifically. In a townhome product, a one-hour rated firewall is a requirement regardless of the presence of a fire suppression system. So that, that's designed to limit spread from unit to unit of a fire. So that firewall rating is there. A two-hour wall is required in products when there's not fire suppression. And that's kind of what's being said is, well, we'll put that two-hour wall there to alleviate the need for suppression. But from a, a fire responder standpoint, from a code official standpoint, the fire spread across units is resolved by the presence of the firewall. The fire suppression system, the automatic sprinklers is not intended to prevent the spread. It's intended to protect the occupants of that building to get out safely in the event of an emergency. So the firewall is not a relief for the protective system in place to protect occupants or visitors to that unit to get out if there is a problem. So I wanted to make that distinction from a code standpoint and, and from what's been supported by other jurisdictions. There was also a comment about, which we appreciate the ideas, but about providing a, an occupant a choice. If you want that system, we can put it in for you, but it's not a requirement. One of the things that code officials look out for is that individual's making a choice, but what about the future occupants of that building? They didn't get to make that choice at that point. And so we are looking out for the longevity of that structure and all of its occupants across time. And these have been procedures or requirements that have been in place to protect getting occupants out of a structure in the event of an emergency. So we do still support that component. That's maybe a little bit different than some of the other testimony heard tonight. A couple of the clarifying points I wanted to make, the, it's not only the IRC, that IRC is International Residential Code. I know we've thrown around some acronyms tonight. It's not only the IRC that we're talking about in this instance. In the code recommendations that the Wellington Fire Protection District sent to the town, it's in the 2018 adoptions that we've had in place since 2019, and it's what they recommended again. The, the 2024 International Fire Code or IFC has a specific local amendment by our Wellington Fire Protection District that says units of three or more, or structures with three or more residential units, and in specifically referencing townhouses, requires automatic suppression by the fire district. They have not changed that position that we have heard. I, I have heard anecdotally that they're willing to look at some of these requirements, but they're not here tonight to present that. So the last evidence that we have from them is that they have recommended keeping that requirement there. From a code standpoint, we would have to look at the IRC, the IFC, the fire code, and also the International Building Code because the I, the IRC and the IFC both relate back to the International Building Code. So for a more robust conversation on this particular topic, which may be valid, and staff is not saying that we shouldn't have the conversation, but staff's recommendation would be that if there's a desire to look at the IBC, the IRC and the IFC and how they relate together around this requirement and bring in some additional evidence, information, and professionals, we would want to coordinate with fire very closely. They're the lead service provider for our fire protection needs. So we would need them to direct and support changes to these codes based on their recommendations. And the town could then evaluate following suit and making the other code amendments to support their recommendations. So we would need their lead on this. Safe Built is our other community partner for plan, review and inspection. They represent communities across multiple jurisdictions that they need to keep some alignment. So we would need to get their input in that conversation as well. In short, to say that we're willing to have these conversations. Staff's recommendation would be to take a look at, uh, if that conversation needs more specific time and energy put to it to not try to workshop it on tonight and tonight's meeting, but we can come back and amend codes at any point in time based on those needs. So if we need to have some additional coordination on this subject, we could absolutely bring that back at a later date. But as it stands, staff at this point with the evidence that we have, don't have enough information to make a recommendation to change other than what we've already presented. I know there was a little more than you'd asked for, Trustee Wigan, and I, I think I covered your topic, but I wanted to share that as well. And those are my closing remarks unless there are any other questions.
No, no questions. Thank you. All right. So do you hear, uh, do I hear a motion on this? Oh yeah, I guess, yeah, nevermind. We will move on. Cause the public hearing's closed, we're good there. All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E5?
Ordinance number 15-2025, considering adoption by reference of the 2024 International Building Codes with local amendments and adoption of the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code and adoption of the 2025 Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code, excuse me, version 1.0.
Thank you. Mr. Bird will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Presentation's very short. This is the second component, which is the formal action that the board can consider on ordinance 15-2025, adopting the 2024 codes as Ms. Clerk said. So this is the official action. It is ripe for your consideration based on we've provided the adequate public hearings and publication in the, in the newspapers and have vetted this across the region. So I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Otherwise, this is your opportunity to deliberate any further and, and take a, an action on ordinance 15-2025.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board at this point?
Uh, my only comment is if we are so very serious about affordability of homes, that I do hope that we take that into serious consideration when there's other opportunities to bring relief to any of our residents. So it may not necessarily be through this action, but there are so many other opportunities. I really hope we take those seriously and aggressively move forward with housing affordability measures.
Good, okay. Any comments from the public on this item? Members of the public will be given three minutes. State your name and podium for the record. Oh, yeah. Jeez o' Pete's. All right. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to adopt ordinance number 152025, adopting by reference the 2024 International Building Codes with local amendments and adoption of the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code and adoption of the 2025 Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code, version 1.0.
Thank you. Any final comments from the board?
Uh, I did just want to say, I, I, I would certainly like to hear from the fire district as far as their input on this. Uh, if we need to potentially make an amendment down the road, we can always do that. So I, but I, I would very much like their input, Cody, if we can, uh, if we can make that happen. Mr. Bird, apologies.
Was there a second?
Um, there was no second on that motion.
Oh, I'll, I'll second.
I agree with Mayor Protan on this one here, you know? If we can get some more input on it from the fire department and such, I would really appreciate that. That'd do a lot of clarification. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E6?
Resolution number 48-2025, resolution of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, committing to diversify and secure the town's long-term water supply.
Thank you. And then Megan Smith, our Deputy Director of Public Works, will present on this.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. This is my first time using our new AV setup, so I hope you can hear me at home. Thank you, Mayor. Again, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. I have the pleasure this evening to present resolution 48-2025, which would formalize the town of Wellington's commitment to diversifying and securing our long-term water supply. So as you all are well aware, since 1983, Wellington has relied very heavily on a, a long-term water supply agreement with North Pooter Irrigation Company for our raw water needs. However, in the past decade, the cost per acre foot has increased dramatically, going from $765 per acre foot in 2015 to nearly as high as $3,800 per acre foot in 2023. Now, while renegotiation efforts with North Pooter are ongoing, a likely outcome of those efforts would be a termed agreement, not a permanent supply. And even with improved terms, there would still be a pretty significant cost to the water fund ongoing. Now, earlier this year, we completed, the town completed a water source development planning effort which analyzed our current and projected demands, financial capacity and potential water supply sources. This plan was discussed with the board at a September 23 regular Board of Trustees meeting. And staff did receive pretty clear support from the board at that time for the importance of pursuing a diversified water portfolio. So the purpose of this resolution before you tonight is really to outline the board's, and thereby the town's commitment to actively pursue alternative water supplies, prioritizing water supply diversification in both planning and budgeting processes. Even going so far as to evaluate participation in confined aquifer projects, such as, for example, the Vida project that was referenced in that water source development planning effort, being developed by Front Range H2O. And then, of course, then to conduct the appropriate amount of due diligence in purchasing into non-tributary groundwater whites, including treatment and delivery. Now, the adoption of this resolution this evening does not have any, does not immediately obligate any funds. It does direct staff to explore feasibility of funding opportunities. And of course, any future fiscal implications would be brought to the board for consideration at that time. And staff does stand behind this resolution pretty strongly to formally commit to securing Wellington's long-term water supply and our water future. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Question from the board on this? Trustee Moore?
No.
Oh.
Just getting ready.
Trustee Wigan?
No questions. I appreciate your diligence on this and we can't keep kicking it down the road, so thank you.
Trustee Daly?
This is incredibly exciting. Thank you.
Mayor Protan? Trustee Cannon, perfect, perfect. All right, uh, do we have any comments from the public on this item? Members of the public, we have three minutes. State your name and podium for the record. Nope, all right. Ms. Clerk, do I hear, or wait, do I hear a motion?
I move to, I move to adopt resolution number 482025, resolution by the Town of Wellington, Colorado, committing to diversify and secure the town's long-term water supply. Second.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, any final comments? No, Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protan Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item E7?
Resolution number 49-2025, a resolution by the Town of Wellington, Colorado, supporting the Northern Colorado Water Alliance and the associated Northern Water, Northern Colorado Water Principles.
Thank you. And then Ms. Megan Smith will present on this item as well.
Good evening again, Mayor and trustees. Uh, so this evening before you, resolution 49-2025 is affirming Wellington's support for the Northern Colorado Water Alliance and the guiding principles that promote regional collaboration and water resource protection. Now, the Town of Wellington has been an active member of the Northern Colorado Water Alliance since 2022. It is a, um, this water alliance is a collaboration of 17, give or take, probably a little more now, and continuing to grow. Municipalities, special districts, counties and other organizations in our region that are working together to address some shared water challenges that are in our region. Water doesn't stop at any city, town, county line, and it is all of our responsibility to ensure protection of it into the future. These challenges do include, include increasing demand, rising infrastructure costs, very complex and differing governing structures across these organizations. And, and truly looking at highlighting the risk of water transfers out of Northern Colorado. So this resolution would adopt those Northern Colorado Water Principles, which do emphasize transparency and respect for Colorado's water rights system, as frustrating as it may be. Collaboration on infrastructure and resiliency projects whenever able. Protection of water for local beneficial use and recognition of water's economic and cultural importance for agriculture, for the environment, for recreation. There have been, uh, I kind of highlighted that point around the risk of transferring water outside of our region. When water is diverted, and I'll be happy to name specific projects if you like, out of the Northern Colorado region, the economic value that that water can provide goes with it and it goes away for forever. Jobs, agricultural productivity.
Jobs, agricultural productivity, community investment, it goes with it and it doesn't come back. This can affect housing affordability. It definitely can affect economic development opportunities. And it really can affect the cultural identity of of the agricultural region that we have here in Northern Colorado. Many entities have already signed on and passed these resolutions, including Laramore County. One of the, that was not included in the list in your packet is actually Berth had passed it just two weeks ago at their town council meeting. Greeley Timoth, Little Thompson Water District, Northern Water, Johnstown Severance. So we would be joining a long list of of other communities committed to ensure that we are creating a unified voice in our region to help deter future efforts to take water out of this region specifically related to if there is not a way to deter it from permanently leaving, that there is adequate mitigation that is left behind for the communities that are still here grappling with how to supply water for ourselves. Again, there is no immediate fiscal implications for this resolution this evening. And any future costs that may be related to a collaborative endeavor would come before the board at that time. And again, staff really does recommend adoption of this resolution, kind of gathering with our other regional neighbors to show that support. When you're the size of Wellington and some of these other communities that were listed, it gets hard to feel like you have a foot large enough in the room. And so it really takes us kind of these larger collaborative efforts to make a point and to be able to compete with Aurora, Thornton, and so on. Just to name a few. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions from the board on this item? Trustee Cannon?
I don't have a question about the the principles that that's being discussed here. But you did bring up an important point about if, you know, I'm reminded of Thornton, for example, their buy-in dry policy, which is, you know, basically taking water out of Northern Colorado and and using it someplace else. I know when when new water projects come on board, like whether the expansion of of not horse tooth, but halogen or something like that, or the NISP project is a great example. You know, there are series of challenges and legal challenges in place brought by various special interest groups, you know, trout unlimited, you know, farmers, you know, people, for whatever reason. And these challenges are addressed through the courts to mitigate the loss of of either the recreation opportunities or or open space or or wildlife and so forth like that. In these buy-in dries is, do you, I don't think that there's anything that collectively groups of municipalities could do to challenge these buy-in dry policies, which take water out of here. But seems like that could be a logical next step.
And those are in, so it's taken, so seventeen plus municipality is all with at least one person. That's as strongly committed to this topic as I am. So it's hard, it's been difficult to get even to this point where we have a set of kind of guiding principles that we felt comfortable, that represented everybody's angle that they're coming at this and the needs that they see for their own community. It took like two years. But yes, those conversations are ongoing. There have been some concerns even with bringing these guiding principles forward for adoption by differing boards around because there's the the question of, well, these are words on paper. Where's the teeth? And there's not yet teeth. But the first step is to band to band together the hooligans, if you will, to make sure that that competing interests understand that there's, it's not going to be a simple effort this time around. There's a lot of people with their eye on the game. We're all kind of looking out for each other. Everybody's always looking out for themselves. I don't, you know, discount that. But there is a a higher kind of shift in an ethos that we're looking to drive in our community, similar to to what has fully developed over decades on the western slope, right? It's referred to as the western slope. And when you say that, you know, the western slope, when it comes to water, you understand that the organizations that you're talking about. And we haven't had that historically in the Northern Colorado region or North Front Range. And this is our effort to kind of make that first step towards creating a collaborative environment, making sure we're all open with each other around what we're doing. There's been a like a, through this this group, one of the most recent efforts was putting together a list of of ditch companies and shares that folks, different folks are interested in buying so that people are aware of who's who's out there looking for what, can put, you know, push developers in the right direction, if they hear anything, an opportunity for, there's already been infrastructure projects that have spun out of, like combined infrastructure projects have spun out of this group meeting together. There's been a lot of exchange of information around water tap fees, raw water dedication fees, you know, trying to navigate the fact that everybody is so different, but we all have this overarching goal of ensuring that all of our communities can continue to develop in the future, and we know that it can't if we don't have appropriate water supplies. So it will be an arduous, not simple process to develop any kind of mechanism that would have any teeth to it yet. And I think at first we're just trying to get our gang and maybe we need jackets or something, black leather. But to just, you know, group of people together to understand that it's not going to be a simple action up here any longer.
Well, I, that, I mean, my opinion and support for the resolution and these principles doesn't change. I will support that. But I was just wondering if those next steps are contemplating those, and you answered that question for me. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan?
I love the collaboration of the different communities getting together. And we're developing a brain trust up here of a lot of very, very knowledgeable people that we haven't had before. So this is no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the public on this item? Nope, no public comment. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to adopt resolution number forty-nine dash twenty twenty five, a resolution by the Town of Wellington, supporting the Northern Colorado Water Alliance and the Associated Northern Colorado Water Principles.
Any final comments?
None.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. On to reports. Are there any reports from the town attorney, Jed Scott?
Not a detailed report, set to say I'm diving in and finding that I'm in a stream and another project. At very busy town, I can lose you all. I assume you all are in a correct shape. It's also a pleasure helping with the staff so far, communicating with them. Look forward to the next several months, being to assist that on the project.
Awesome. Thank you. The town administrator, Ms. Garcia?
So a couple of things. Megan just talked about the Northern Water, Northern Colorado Water Alliance. And to be honest, we were, we were part of the, we were part of the core group in the beginning. And it has grown over time. But having Megan at the table has makes, gives us all the words we need. You know, she she is knowledgeable. She's well-respected within that group. And they ask her advice and listen to her recommendations. And so it's it's really exciting to sit in the room. Their knowledge base is like up here. I'm like, I know that we turn on the water and where the water comes from and stuff, but they they all work together and it's, you know, it's not just municipalities, but it's our water districts and things like that. So there and their their work with their boards is very different from my work with you all. So which is taking, everything we do takes time and effort because of the way the different boards work and things like that. But I want to commend Megan and her work on that. It's it's been phenomenal. And I just look forward to the next steps that we get to take with this with this group. Next week, your trustee meeting starts at six PM with my evaluation and executive session. I sent out an email earlier this week about home, maybe it was last week. You know, the days just flow together about home rule. And if we needed, if we were looking at the April election, we needed to call a special meeting. I have not heard from anyone, so I'm assuming we're okay with moving forward with the November timeline for an election. And we will talk about that at our meeting on December ninth. And we will look to schedule a work session with Wellington Fire Protection District to discuss building codes. So thank you.
Thank you. Staff communications were in the packet. Any board reports? Trustee Moore?
So I've been absent or on Zoom for the good part of two months and appreciate the opportunity to do so. I've been in three different communities that have been affected by disaster and helping them to rebuild. And two were fire and one was a flood. And while I'm there doing that, I'm thinking about our community here. And I'm just so grateful that we made the decision to move forward with a robust emergency management plan. And what's sad is one community that I was in had one, but the fire happened during COVID. And so there was no plan for that. All that to say, I'm just very glad that we've made that a priority. And I did want to say thank you to Megan. This is a very large task with many moving parts. And I'm just grateful that you're the one we have at the helm.
Thank you. No other board reports?
I thought you were gonna call names.
Oh, I just go around the room sometimes.
Okay. Well, if anybody got to participate with Main Streets in the Town of Wellington for trick or treat down Main Street, it was a total success. As always, it's my favorite event of the entire year. Fourth of July is my favorite day, but this event is my favorite event of the entire year. There's so much participation. I love seeing the kids and families. Our our community is primarily made of families. Yet we don't see them all the time. So it's wonderful to see it. They changed the hours this year to really get kids right after they're getting out of school. And it was really successful and it was a constant like stream of kids the entire time instead of a big mass that then is really long lines. But the business support, the high school students who are out there doing the photo booths and the spooky walk and all the things that were in the parking lot were fantastic. So they're adding and making it better every year, and it is just so much fun. So thank you to all the businesses that participated to make that happen. I do believe that's the, they lose the most money on this event every year of all their events. It's expensive and they're not really making a lot of money. So the business support and sponsorships they receive are vital to make this happen and let our community get together like this. So thank you to them to support the Wellington Main Street program. They're having their annual dinner on the twentieth here from five thirty to seven thirty. It is a taste of Wellington. There's going to be food from all over the place in Wellington. And it is, it's come hungry and wearing your comfy pants because it is so much great food from all of our favorite restaurants and food trucks and drinks and desserts and everything. And you get to learn more about the downtown, the Cleveland Construction Project and then have some more FaceTime with Dola. So I hope everybody here, this is your personal invitation. I really expect you all to be there, to be honest. I really, really want your your support. And then invite anybody who's interested and they're looking for board members or people who are interested in supporting the Wellington Main Street program. Pross is continuing to talk with the Legion and other nonprofits in town, including Friends of Wellington, about funding for the, it's, I'll, I'll bring it, leave it to the veterans. But to talk about the Veterans Garden and Wellington Community Park. And they want to go full force and start to do fundraising for that project. Unfortunately, you all know that we did not get the T-Mobile hometown grant, which was fifty thousand dollars, which would have been the majority of the expenses. We're looking upwards to eighty thousand dollars to make this this dream become a reality. And it's really important to these groups that it is homegrown and built by the community. So I I want to put that out there that they're working on it. I do know also that we have room to support them and get them jump-started. So please keep that in mind as as different nonprofits probably come before us and ask for some support to get kickstart funds in order to do major fundraising for this project. And then I got to attend the Wellington Affordable Housing Authority meeting. We approved the budget for this next year. And this is a great time to get thrown in there because I learned about the budget and every single line item that they do and those activities. So it was a really good way to jump in. So I'm learning a ton. I think there's some huge opportunities for us to to really do more and to activate them and find them property. I think they could be doing a lot for us and for the community. So I will be bringing any updates or ideas that come forward out of that to this group. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Somebody else will do football.
Well, the football team, they, what, they won their first round game. What was that on Thursday?
Saturday.
Saturday against Alamosa, cut out forty-eight to zero.
Yes.
I don't know who's up next.
It was very cold.
Res. Yeah, rez. Okay.
Friday at seven.
So, uh.
In Wellington.
Yeah. I think we get home field advantage all the way to like the final game based off of our seed. That's I read that somewhere. I don't know if that's fact. But yeah. Yeah, these guys, they're, they play ball. So yeah, show up Friday.
Happy Veterans Day to our veterans, both on staff and on our board. Thank you, guys, for your service.
Thank you, guys. Okay, having no further business, do I hear a, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. Having now adjourned the meeting time being seven fifty-six PM.